All right, there's peer pressure, but Siri says six o'clock. Please rise and join me in the place.
I pledge to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks y'all for joining us on a little bit different schedule. We'll move on to the roll call, please.
Congress, or Congress. Councilman Larson.
Yes.
Councilman Cassidy.
Yes.
Councilman Dan Han.
Present.
Councilwoman Melinda Cox.
Present.
Councilwoman Stubble.
Present.
Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Also present.
You have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. Good to see you all again. Next up, we have approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Great, moved by Councilmember Cox and seconded by Councilmember Larson. Call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 All right, that passes. Next up, public hearing. Bear with me while I read this one out. Ordinance 2025-15 granting a non-exclusive franchise to Black Hills Wyoming Gas LLC DBA Black Hills Energy, its successors in assigns and the right, permission, and authority to construct, maintain, and operate a gas transmission and distribution system, including mains, pipes, conduit services, and other structures in, under, upon, over, across, and along the streets, alleys, bridges, and public places within the present and future corporate limits of the city of Lander, Wyoming, for the furnishing, transmission, distribution, and sale of gas, whether artificial, natural, mixed, or otherwise, for lighting, heating, domestic, industrial, and other uses in said city and elsewhere, limiting the term of said grant prescribing the terms and conditions under which said company may operate, and repealing ordinance 1239. Okay, with that, oops, got it, no. Sorry, gotta get organized up here. So at 6:02, open the hearing. And Lance, can you give us a little info on this?
Sure, happy to. This is another one of our franchises that we're going to be going through three readings. We were pretty close, and then there's some changes that are going to be potentially coming on next reading. So there were some things that through reading it on both sides that maybe need a little adjustment, but what we've agreed to do is go through the public hearing and then through the first approval. And then if there's anything we need to bring forward as amendment, you'll see that on the second round.
Great, thank you.
And then we do have a couple people here that would like to speak.
Great. So let's open up to a public comment. Come on up to the microphone. Let us know who you are and just make sure that's on and that helps for our recording.
Hello. All right. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Lynn Kendall. I'm Public Affairs Manager with Black Hills Energy. With me tonight is Josh Haddon. He's our Operations Manager. A lot of you probably know him. Him and his team are the core of our business here in this area. They work day in and out to bring you the reliable natural gas service that you count on in your homes and your businesses. But we just wanted to be here and available tonight on the first reading of the franchise. As Lance pointed out, we do have some tweaks that will probably be brought to you as we continue through the readings, just as we continue to have conversations, just all friendly amendments brought forth, as this is the first five-year window opener of the franchise that we renewed five years ago. So we've had a long partnership in Lander. Black Hills Energy is proud to serve the customers of Lander and look forward to continuing that service, and just wanted to be here in case there was any questions about Black Hills Energy, about the franchise, or the window that we could help answer.
Thank you. Thank you. Josh, you're not going to add anything, or?
I'm not going to add anything. I was just here for any operations questions.
Okay.
Yep.
I got it, okay.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for being here. So with that, 6:05, close the hearing and open up the next one at 6:05. So this is ordinance 2025-16, an ordinance repealing Title III adoption and enforcement of uniform codes and standards for mobile and modular buildings, and enacting Title III buildings and construction of the Lander Municipal Code. So Lance or Hunter, want to give any other update overview on this?
Sure, yes, Mayor and Council. This is what we talked about last meeting, where we need to adopt the most current codes by the state, and then we've reworked the adoption procedures. It's, there's a lot as far as what it looks like we've amended, but in reality, it's trying to get us back into a more organized approach from what we already had and adopt codes correctly. So Hunter will be able to speak more and answer questions as we get into items.
Thank you.
Later in the meeting.
Anyone want to speak for the public comment on this? Yep, silence is deafening. So we'll close that at 6:06. Next up, communication from the floor. Please approach the microphone, state your full name for the record. This meeting and comments are electronically recorded. All comments will be limited to three minutes. Anyone wants to come forward? And that's a no. Okay, we'll move on to Mayor and Council update, starting Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Get him drug up here. Okay. Had the Senior Center Board Meeting here this, earlier this week, and one of the things that I was not aware of there is that they accept garden produce from the public. It's not used for cooking, but it's there to, you know, be distributed out to whoever would like it. And I know that within the last few weeks, anyway, the garden harvest has been at the peak, and some people just wonder what in the world to do with all this stuff. And that's a good place to get rid of it, you know, was there at the Senior Center and then also with the food bank. They both take a lot of that stuff. So as you're cleaning up your garden, you know, just kind of keep that in mind and utilize those openings there. Also, the Senior Center is in need of two or three new advisory board members. And I don't know if we can get Ann to maybe put something on the city's webpage just to let people know that that, there is, there are some openings there with the Senior Center on that, on those advisory boards. So that would be great.
Is that for the Senior Center or for the Senior Center Foundation?
This is for the Senior. That's the, hang on just a second. Let me double check or remember where that come from. No, that's the Senior Center, I believe.
Okay.
I believe, you know, because they review the activities and so forth for the, for what's going on at the Senior Center as well as the menus and, you know, just that kind of stuff. So yes, it is for the Senior Center. Lance, remind me, before we leave, I just got a quick question with you about Conservation District, but nothing that needs to come before the council here. And Mayor, I think that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Member Cassidy.
Mayor, Council staff, just one thing from the Planning Commission. Pretty helpful meeting last week. They're still talking through some of the recommendations to us. And then on the back end of their, their meeting, there was a pretty involved conversation about the mechanism for outreach to get community members involved. A lot of discussion about this room being empty, them discussing things that they would like to have input on, that input perhaps happening late and being communicated a bit poorly, perhaps. So there was a pretty helpful conversation about that. And I think that there's something to be said for that. So it might be good if anybody's interested in watching, reviewing the tape on that, or we can dig into it maybe a little bit deeper to answer any questions that you might have. That's it for me. One more thing, sorry Lance, I do have one thing for you after, just like, just like John did.
Councilmember Han.
Well, I'd talk about board meetings, but I've been elk hunting, so, but the elk hunting's been real good.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. The first thing I'd like to talk about was the communication that came from Hunter Roseberry in reference to Title III. It was really nice to have a summary in our email early on to review that, gave us an opportunity to really digest that and then have the public hearing. So thank you, thank you for that. And I think I talked to the mayor today a little bit about some of those gaps in communication and how we as a council can help bridge those. And then also, I would like to, on the work session, have some time to discuss maybe the agenda setting process and our procedure, and how we can better be stewards of communication from the staff to the community. And that would help with, with agenda setting. And it just came up with, you know, with, that was a really nice addition in our inbox. As far as Lita goes, there's not really an update as far as business. Got a good meeting, but I've already reported on that. And then the Chamber of Commerce, I had a meeting last week. They've had some changes, which I'm sure people are aware of. And so at this point, I don't have any update or anything like that, but we were working towards some ideas, you know, it was just a roundtable kind of a discussion last week. So nothing, nothing more to report on that. So thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Stubble.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any items of business for my liaison chips.
Wow.
I know. Thank you.
And Councilmember Han.
I have nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, since, yes, we got some time spared.
Okay. I've noticed the wayfinding signs around town, and those are really nice. I had one individual contact me and says, you know, it's really nice to see the sign down there on Main Street, or the intersection up there by McDonald's, you know, that tells you that the hospital is this way, but you go up Buena Vista, and there's not a wayfinding sign that, that says a hospital or airport, but it does tell you where the rodeo grounds are. Now, just wondering if there was maybe a plan to get the hospital and airport maybe put on a wayfinding sign also.
Yeah, great, great question for that. So those were through the Wind River Visitors Council, they had special funding for that. And I know Ann worked on the city's end. I recall that there was a limit to the number of signs that we could do, and I also know not all of them are in place. So to be determined if they're just not there yet, or we hit our limit about them.
You can get some cardboard or something and put underneath that one.
Right, or like, yeah.
Mayor.
Yep.
So those are special emergency signs for the hospital and ours are visitor signs. So I asked the same question, and I was told that we needed to keep the hospital signs as their own sign. And then these are separate as far as what they are, but we couldn't, shouldn't put hospital and emergency stuff on these signs. So we did talk about it during that, because I thought it'd be important if somebody was wanting to know, you know, where to go. But that was strictly saying, hey, those eight signs and the directions are already set up in communities for that.
Got it. And how about airport? Seems like that would also be a nice thing to.
Yeah, I don't know about the airport. We talked about that one, but I'll see if I can get more information and.
Great, thank you.
I can get it to you on that one.
Anything else, John? Okay, a few things from me. So the open house for the liquor license holders, I thought went really well. Thanks y'all for being there as well. We will be following up with potential recommendations for the second reading and likewise having an open house and education opportunity for liquor license holders before we have our second reading for that. Wanted to note, and Lance, you'll probably say more about this in your update, but hooray for seeing asphalt on Lincoln Street. I was, I know it's not the perfect, Lance can fill us in on that, but I'm so glad we've got at least something there in place. Was not looking forward to that being unpaid for the winter time. I want to give a shout out. The Student Council at LVHS did an amazing job for their Veterans Day celebration, or not celebration, but commemoration and honoring, just really blown away by their thoughtfulness for that, and appreciate all the folks who attended that. Also want to note, this isn't exactly council, but it is about our friends and neighbors here in town. The food bank is incredibly busy right now. So the last week of October, they had 388 people served, and that was already higher than normal numbers for them. Last week was 604. So significant need there. And also, I gotta say, go Lander, because the donations of food and money was up about 50%. So so far, just this month, they've received about 2,000 pounds of food for them. So both can appreciate that there is need, and you'll see on our agenda later tonight, something that we can do to help out our friends in these tight times, but also really proud that folks have stepped up, those who can are stepping up. I really appreciate that. So, and just a quick reminder, next week I'll be out at, in Salt Lake for the National League of Cities Convention, which promises to be both incredibly educational, informative, and totally terrifying to be among thousands of people trying to learn about civic government. Yeah, as an introvert, I'm excited and terrified for that. And that's it for me. Thank you. Turn it over to our staff.
I have nothing tonight, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for the chief, interim chief? Okay.
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. Just a few updates. Lincoln Street is being paved on Friday, is what we're looking at, but curb and gutter is not going in for the sections that aren't installed as you look at it today. That's going to be installed after we get the asphalt in. So everything should work out as far as grade and measurement. It's not how we like to do things, but that was the sacrifice we made to be able to get asphalt in. They couldn't get the 500 feet in by the time that we resolved the ditch issues and got the communication lines out of the way. So they were talking about leaving it in road base, and this is the better alternative to that. So we're looking at winter shutdown in the next couple weeks on trying to get everybody's properties buttoned up, what we leave closed, what we backfill and base, what continues to get concrete. And so there is a chance that the curb and gutter is still going to be installed. It's just a matter of, you know, when they saw cut that, when they remove the asphalt and when they pour that. But they can do all of that work with, with asphalt in place. So still working through the surface work and hoping we see quite a bit done. But the problem with concrete is either you have to blanket it depending on how cold it is or potentially heat it. And so if we're getting into heating concrete, I bet that they're gonna go ahead and say, hey, let's shut it down. If they can just use blankets, then we'll probably see work continue. So that's where Lincoln Street's gonna pause at that point, once the weather shifts and we see lower temperatures.
Okay, any questions for Lance? Hey.
And then meter project, I told you, we had some plumbing issues where people tiled over floors and resolving things were less than 10, that we're dealing with people in the community on trying to resolve issues on how to get those fixed and get in. And some of these are sewage linking, leaking, and crawl spaces that needs to be fixed before we can access, and, you know, just different sort of issues. So nice to finish that one up. As soon as we do, we'll get it in for, you know, completion and advertising. We're still waiting on some pit lids, some special diameter ones that help the meters read through those, when they're bigger diameter out and out in the community. So that's that. And then Industry Day. So tomorrow at the Community Center from 10 to 11, there's Industry Day where we're going to be promoting the Buena Vista Project. And so our engineers reached out to contractors and advertised and said, hey, come learn more about our project. And that's to entice people to come in, listen, and then potentially bid that job here in the fall when it becomes available.
Can you give us the overview of the Buena Vista Project?
Sure. I mean, it's a little bit of road realignment up by the rodeo grounds itself, and then fixing some of the drainage issues and entrance issues that we see ponding in that area, coming around and it's asphalt, and then curb and gutter where needed, sidewalk improvements, water line, that water line that's in there is ductile iron not reacting well, so it's pitting and failing down to the rural waterhouse. There's not sewer in that road, other than just crossings here and there. So the sewer that comes out of the subdivisions, like go across and down the hill towards the river, they don't run down Buena Vista. So there's not a lot of sewer on this project. But we're having to do new fabric and base and then asphalt. This didn't test well as far as the subgrade that's in there. So better structure to the road and a longer lasting road when we're all said and done.
Great, thanks. Another question, going back to the meter project, is there a general sense of when we might start rolling out the Metron app for folks?
Yeah, we talked about being able to do that in the next few weeks. And so it's training as far as our staff training internally, and then they have pamphlets and information to get to the community members. And then being able to answer people's questions, they were worried about the same thing we were, which was, are we going to have enough information? And who are they calling to get information? So Metron was there leaving, will become the point of contact and kind of experts here on the app. And so we need to be able to
Yeah.
tell people how to do it and how to use it and understand it ourselves before we start putting it out there. So I would bet within the next few weeks that we're getting that information out, or at least training internally to put that together.
Great, thanks. Any other questions, John? Or Councilmember Larson, sorry?
Yes. What time was that Industry Day meeting tomorrow?
It's 10 to 11. I mean, yeah, that's right, at the Community Center.
Okay. You don't mind if we show up or I show up?
What's that?
You don't mind if I show up?
You're supposed to give a speech.
Yeah, that's right.
It's open house. It's for everybody that wants to come and learn more. So yes, please.
Thank you.
And spread the word if anybody else is interested.
And I'll point out, though, that if more, you have to avoid having a quorum at that meeting. So you have to be careful with how many of you show up and what you discuss if there are more than three of you there or four of you there.
What if we don't talk to each other?
You can do that, because it is a public meeting. So you can have more of you there. You just can't speak about city stuff there, which would literally be impossible at this kind of a meeting, I'm afraid. But it's up to you guys.
Appearances matter. Yeah, I think you're probably safe. All right, Regine, what do you got?
Thank you. I had to check with Lance, but I do want to add that the Buena Vista Project includes surface improvements on Pushwood Court and the parking lot at our Pushwood Village Apartments. So that makes improvements for that senior living community up there. The only thing I have is the Jefferson Street extension into Proposier River Park was supposed to bid today, but we had enough questions and enough interested bidders that we've delayed that to Monday, the 24th at 1:00 PM. So the good news is, we have potential bidders on the project. So that's nice to hear. Unless you have any questions, I don't have anything else.
All right, Jari.
It looks like they just voted to open up the federal government. Anyway, but because of that, the 2025 compliance supplement for the audit is not out, and because the federal government was shut down. So normally, the audit is due by December 31st. Well, the Department of Audit has, is allowing CPAs to extend it because the compliance is not out yet, and it won't be the first thing that the federal government will go back into session and do. So our auditors have requested a 45-day extension from the date of the release of the compliance supplement. So we could possibly, you might not see the audit until January or February this year. Department of Audit will allow us that. We did get a acceptance letter that they'll allow us to have it extended that long. So if you're wondering why we're not seeing Brian Brown, it's because we're waiting for this supplemental compliance, and then he will be around. But I'm guessing he probably won't be around till after the 1st of the year.
Okay. Thanks for that. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to Adam.
Yeah, so tonight I was asked to discuss a specific topic with everybody on consent agendas, what they're used for, what they're not used for. So I found a little cheat sheet from WHAM that kind of describes it a little bit. So it says the consent agenda is for routine, non-controversial, and previously discussed standard items that do not require debate and can be approved in one motion unless a council member requests removal of a specific item for further discussion. There are specific topics that can be included on a consent agenda that would be approval of minutes, routine financial actions, standard contracts and renewals, licenses and permits, staff appointments and reappointments, although sometimes that's not the best, routine administrative items, and standard property or infrastructure actions that would be related to easements, road dedications, plats that have already been reviewed, and that are unanimously going to be recommended. There are certain things that should not be on a consent agenda, and that would be anything that requires public hearing, which is fairly obvious, anything that's controversial, substantive, or revolves around policymaking, and any items where a council member has expressed previous concerns, and then items affecting private property rights, and items involving personal decisions beyond simple reappointment. So it's fairly broad in terms of what you can put into a consent agenda. Consent agendas are designed to make meetings go a little bit faster, so you don't have to just constantly make motions on routine things that everybody knows you're going to vote yes on. And so, but if there are items that certainly are going to be debated, have lots of issues, lots of discussion, or if you want to have further transparency on a specific item, meaning that you want to have staff explain it in a little bit more detail than it can be its own agenda item. So any questions I can answer about consent agendas?
Councilmember Larson.
Not about consent agendas, but a tangent to it.
Okay, is it arbitrary and capricious? Because otherwise, no.
Absolutely. As I was attending the Senior Center meeting, the Chairman of the Board there says that we do not have to have a motion to adjourn a meeting, according to Robert's rules. And I was just wondering if there was any truth to that, or if that was just a wild lie from somewhere.
All the Roberts rules that I've read, it says that it requires an emotion to adjourn a meeting. So maybe he's going by Rogers Rules.
Okay, we'll check, see. Thank you.
Yeah. Going back to the consent agenda, I asked Adam to bring that up, thinking about, we have the hanger lease is one of those things, and there's times when we have three or four hanger leases, and some of those other things as a way to have some of those things in the consent agenda and try to streamline some of our meetings. So that's why I asked about it. And that's why we might start seeing some of those things included in consent agenda in the future for it. Okay.
Yeah, so, and thank you. An update on liquor licenses, the renewal applications are to be here this Friday, the 14th. So there's time for the liquor division to review them. Right now, as of tonight, there are seven that I'm still waiting on. And I think, and I have spoken to all of them, so they, you should get them in. That's all.
Great. Thanks for following up with them. Thanks for following up with them.
Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Thanks. I hate to add to your plate, but as you speak to the seven that you're still following up on, if you receive communication, ask if they'll send in feedback to Mayor or either Police Chief Wa or any of us about the title to licensing changes. When I looked through, you know, council, just quickly, I'll say the feedback we've received so far, we've heard from less than half of the license holders. We've had some really active ones, which I'm grateful for. But we haven't heard from a majority yet. So if you don't mind, like reminding them, there's another opportunity to weigh in on the codes around licenses, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Good point. Yeah, I just have a quick follow up question to that. Do you know of those liquor license, how many of them are corporate? You won't hear from corporate. I mean, I think that should be.
I think I just got the last corporate one tonight.
Okay. But by way of providing feedback on any changes, they're not going to.
Right. So, so I have called all of the corporate locations. As a matter of fact, the local phone number is on the application. And so I've spoken actually with many of the local managers, even though it's a corporate company and tried to inform them about their input and that it was valued. So they do know.
So that mean we have two that we're aware of? Maverick and Safeway? And Pizza Hut?
Pizza Hut, yeah.
So three.
So three. Yeah, three. Mini Mark. So that'd be the fourth one.
Anything else? All right. Speaking of consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have approval of September twenty three, twenty twenty five, special meeting minutes. Approve October fourteen, twenty twenty five, regular city council meeting minutes. Approve October twenty eight, twenty twenty five, special regular city council meeting minutes. Approve October twenty eight, twenty twenty five, work session, city council meeting minutes. Approve October thirty, twenty twenty five, special meeting minutes and approve bills and claims. And again, a motion in a second. Second. Moved by Councilmember Larson and seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any questions, concerns about any of the items there? Okay, see none. We'll call for the question, Councilmember Han.
Yes.
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 And that passes. We move on to old business. First one up, approve third and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty five, eleven. Rezoning Propoja River Park addition from R three, single and multifamily residential district to PL Public Lands. Get a motion in a second for that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Dan Han with a second by Councilmember Cox. Given that this is the third reading, I'm guessing there's no questions about this. Councilmember Larson, call for the question.
Yes.
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 Great. And that passes. Next one, approve second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five, twelve, granting a franchise to Northern Arapahoe and tribal industries, Inc. DBA Wind River Internet on behalf of itself and its affiliates to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Lander, Wyoming. And once again, a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cox and seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. Likewise, there's a second reading. I'm doubting there's much in the way of questions, but anyone? Councilmember Josh Han, start with call for the question.
Yes.
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 And also passes. Last of this section, approve the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five, fourteen, amending sections seven, ten, one through seven, ten, six, tobacco products, age requirements within the city of Lander. Motion in a second, please. The moved here.
Second.
That's moved by Councilmember Stubble and seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any questions on this one? That's pretty straightforward. Call for the question, starting with you, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 And that passes. Okay, moving on to next section, new business, also action items. Let me take a sip here before I go for that mouth again. Mouthful. Approve first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five, fifteen, granting a non exclusive franchise to Black Hills Wyoming Gas LLC, DBA Black Hills Energy. Its successors and assigns and the right permission and authority to construct, maintain and operate a gas transmission and distribution system. Including mains pipes, conduit services and other structures in, under, upon, over, across and along the streets, alleys, bridges and public places within the present and future corporate limits of the city of Lander, Wyoming. For the furnishing, transmission, distribution and sale of gas, whether artificial, natural mixed or otherwise for lighting, heating, domestic industrial and other uses in said city and elsewhere. Limiting the term of said grant prescribing the terms and conditions under which said company may operate in repealing ordinance twelve thirty nine. I get a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Dan Hunt and seconded by Councilmember Cox. So is there any future questions about this, especially since we have representatives from Black Hills Energy? We have questions.
Mayor, can I? Yes. I feel like you opened a door for us to walk through. So I'm going to do it. Could you just give us a overview of the nature of the changes that we might see on second reading?
Yes, I think one of the bigger ones is we were charging a permit fee and a franchise fee, and we don't do that. We haven't been charging a permit fee now. And there wasn't a plan to double charge them. So I think that's one of the major issues that we've got to get removed from, from the document. And then they've had some changes and reviewed it, I think from the beginning to now. So they've got a different set of eyes on it. So I'm not sure what the other small changes may be, but I don't think it's anything substantial.
Thank you.
Lance, could you explain a little bit the difference between a permit fee versus a franchise fee?
Sure. Franchised gives them the permission as you, and if you want to read this one more time, you know, but it gives them the permission to do everything within the right of way. You know, and so to charge them a permit fee on top of that, it's really duplicating the efforts. And so we want to know where they're installing. We want them to apply for a permit. Show us where the line is going to go and make sure that we don't have utility conflicts or they're within the right of way at the right location. We're not trying to take the franchise fee and charge them permit both. To me, that's a duplicate sort of charge. And so it's working together, you know, and they've been great to work with because they'll give us, hey, we're going to do this here or do that there. Comes across our email boxes and we can approve those permits and they can construct, but it all happens in the permission we've already given them rather than each time that they want to come to a project that they have to pay a fee and move forward with it.
Great. Thanks for the distinction there. Can we move to call for the question? Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Wonderful. That passes as well. Next up, approve first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash sixteen and ordinance repealing Title Three Adoption and Enforcement of Uniform Codes and Standards for Mobile and Modular Buildings and Enacting Title Three Buildings in Construction of the Lander Municipal Code. Motion in a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson and seconded by Councilmember Cox. And that fixes a tag team of Lance and Hunter for any questions that we've got about this.
I don't have any questions. I have a comment just because we were able to get on top of this earlier and not that we haven't before. I'm not drawing attention to that in a sense that we've not done it correctly before. But it did give me an opportunity to forward this information on to some contractors because as some of you know, I'm having some work done on my house. So I had a plumber and an electrician and a contractor all at once. And all three of them took time to review what I'd sent out and all had sent back that this looks great. It's moving towards what we should be following anyway. And then they did add a couple of remarks about let's just make sure that everybody's following the same rules so that there's some accountability, some uniform accountability. And I thought that was really great because it was a good conversation. It was in advance of a vote. Which I think is important. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes. Is this where I can just discuss some of the items that was in the ordinance itself?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just some stuff there that seemed to be a little bit contradictory. If you go to page fifty five on the in your packet there.
If we're looking at the ordinance itself, can you give us what section you're looking at?
It's section thirty one dash four, or point four, one, four, point two, zero. It's on the amendments. And it was my understanding, I'm trying to down here to where I can.
Can you say that?
It is the only one that references thirty one. It's, that's not correct. It should be three. I think. So if you look here, see the amendment is thirty one dot fourteen dot twenty. And it should probably be three.
Got it. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, if you're on your council packet, page fifty five of one forty one. It talks about we'll get there in a second. Apologize. Six, okay, D. Yeah. And it talks about excluding one or two family dwellings, which we've discussed that. Then it goes back to Yes. Okay. So then you go to D on page fifty six. And it says date by which sprinkler systems must be installed. It tells you one, one of twenty twenty seven. So is are we conflicting there? With the fire sprinkler being Nolan Boyd?
Yeah. So that particular one, I know it's kind of cryptic to read through all these amendments of what they are in reference to what the code sets are. That one in particular talks about it is assisted living homes and when those need to be installed by. So it's not like it's going to be any, any general building. It's going to be specifically in regards to a medical care facility of existing, like assisted living facilities. So they will need to be installed in those facilities by that date and time.
I certainly don't read it that way, but if that's what you're telling me, I'll believe you.
Sure.
Okay. And then on page fifty nine. Your council packet. Three point two six. H three. It talks about public services shall not be extended to mobile homes hereafter located in the city unless mobile homes has been issued a mobile home placement permit. Is that retroactive or do we do that already?
We currently do that. So none, none of the modular home stuff has changed from what we're currently doing in there. Other than we added one piece in the placement of mobile homes and the foundations they are. So that that includes the EBS pads that's in there and the one first section. That's the only change to to what we're doing. So mobile homes do get placement permits.
Okay. I'm going up one more page. I don't know why this stuff all jumped out at me, but it did. It talks about wind loads on A dash one. And I was wondering why the mobile home shall be exempt from the provisions of this section, just because they're in a mobile home park.
I agree that, that I would agree that that should be struck from this. It gives conflicting information in the city with what we are. So there's a few adjustments. Thankfully, there are three readings for these. That would be one of those, I would say is the new PC term for mobile homes is called a manufactured home. But if a manufactured home is in city limits, it should have the same standards throughout, in my opinion.
Okay. And one last one, and then I'll leave you alone.
No, you're good.
Okay. On item six there, it says all tongues towing devices under carry support structures need to be removed. But then you go back to page fifty eight. And it says if you camouflage them, that they're all right to be on there. Which way are we?
Yeah, I would agree. That's probably something needs to be cleaned up a little bit. The way I kind of read that is there the old term for mobile homes, sorry, was for a modular home is also manufactured home. So terminology changed in the last ten years as to what a manufactured home is. And we should probably clean that up throughout here. And by the next meeting, I'll clean up what what those differences are between manufactured homes, modular homes and mobile homes.
Okay. But the tongue, you know, was, you know, do you, one, in one, it says that it has to be removed and the other says long as you camouflage it through a blanket orbit or whatever else.
Sure. Just council have a preference as to if we have tongues on mobile homes or not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My assumption is the way that it was written was probably in mobile home parks. It was probably for the transient nature that they would be in there for two years, hook up and take them off and go versus if they're placing an R three somewhere in town, they may be more permanent. I'm guessing that's what's the intent when this was made, but and to match the mojo of the neighborhood by cutting the tongue off of it. So we've also seen them fixed, Hunter. So we ones can be removed on newer ones and they can be taken off and completely removed. Some of the older ones that we've dealt with are fixed and you'd have to actually cut them off with a torch. And so it might be trying to, you know, say camouflage them if you, rather than completely ruin the structural integrity of the unit, but we can work on this. And you brought up one that's actually been an issue with us on the wind loads that we've talked about before. So we'll take a shot at these. If you guys want us to adjust them to, to bring them up to spec on what would be better and then get rid of some of those areas to clear them up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Agreed for that. Councilmember Stubble.
Thanks. I have a follow up on that. So it was a little confused. Hunter, so I heard you say that mobile homes is synonymous now with manufactured homes. But the way I read this document, if I didn't mishear you, there's a section of standards for mobile homes. That's, you know, starting on page fifty seven. And then there's a separate section of standards for modular and manufactured. So I read them as different with, you know, particular standards to each category. Is there, if you're saying we're treating them the same, are we going to take just one full set of those standards out? Like that's where the contradictions are starting to pop up, right? Should we combine those two sections? Is that what you're saying? So that?
I think we could probably get a definition of each one and then separate those out because I see that we have a definition for mobile home, but not manufactured home. So let's break out those definitions and then see if we create two separate standards or, or one, depending on what we come up with.
That makes sense to me.
Okay. We can work on that.
Anything else to adjust before our next reading?
And there is one more in the property maintenance code that didn't get filled in and populated. And that's I was going to talk with Officer McCray about what he perceives and it's weed height is you quantify the inches of weed height is when it becomes an offense within the property maintenance code. And I didn't feel like I had the breadth to understand what the weed height, we can strike that and just give it up to officer's discretion too. But that's one you'll see in there that does not have a populated thing in there too.
Great. Last chance.
Mayor, I'll take that if I could. Hopefully a softer question than a specifics on the buildings, which is not my expertise, but I'm curious. I really appreciated in your letter, you said your, our desire is not to change the overall expectations for contractors, any drastic changes. What it kind of process we had to roll out to folks, give them awareness. What it kind of process we had to roll out to folks, give them awareness that we're doing this? Invite them to meetings, you know, thinking of course of our liquor license holders and the feedback that they had. And we can always make sure we're doing extra in terms of letting folks know what meetings we're having and what we're talking about. So can you tell us about like how you rule this out?
Sure, yeah, I make sure we have a, a table at every open house we have just to let them know this is potentially coming. Here's what we're expecting. Don't, aren't, aren't well attended perhaps by, by contractors, but we can have a specific pizza with contractors. It's just tough to find a time during the business hours when they can do this. And then typically at the end of the day, they want to go home with their families too. So I can kick it out to several of the contractors in the pool and see what they think is a conducive way to do this. Or if it is an email like I sent to the council and just say heads up, this is what's coming. And here's why it's coming is this is mandated by the state fire marshal's office. And if we don't do this, we don't have jurisdiction in Lander and things are going to come to a grinding halt too. I also purchased these books and these are just the specific changes, significant changes to all the different code sets too. So it's kind of the Cliff Notes version of the code book to see what's going to be different from what they've become accustomed to. And I'd be happy to loan these out to contractors or, or help give them Cliff Notes on those too.
Mayor, I think for what it's worth, this total opinion, that email I think sounds really warranted and inefficient for everybody involved. So give them a, give them a heads up and hopefully they're also reading the newspaper and tracking our agendas and all the things that we like our community to do. The email sounds great.
Direct email sounds like a great idea. Yeah. Anything else? Okay, call for the questions, starting with councilmember Hunt.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
And that passes. Uh, item C is next. Thank you for being here, Hunter. Approved resolution thirteen seventy-two adopting City of Lander's strategic plan pillars twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine. Motion in a second for that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councilmember Dan Hunt with a second by councilmember Cox. Any comments, question? Again, we, we saw this back in the spring and had pretty good discussion on it. I was the holdup about making sure previous items were included. We still planned to do continued strategic plans, but this at least gives staff some better direction about what the council's intentions are of how they are moving forward. Any comments or questions? Okay, then start with councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 And that also passes. So next up, approved resolution thirteen seventy-three temporarily waiving water and sewer utility late fees and suspending water disconnections, AKA shut offs for non-payment for three billing cycles corresponding to water usage in October, November and December with the corresponding bills due in November, December and January respectively. Get a motion in a second, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by councilmember Larson and seconded by councilmember Cox. This was Shari's idea in a staff meeting last week. And Shari, any information you want to share with us about background on it?
Well, it does say that the feds are reopening. They just did take that vote. This is like eighteen hundred dollars a month in late fees we normally collect. So it's not anything that's going to break the bank, but it might help those that are struggling a bit not to have to worry about their water bill for a couple of months. We normally don't shut people off during the winter time anyway, but this would allow them time if they were furloughed that they could have time to get caught up maybe within a couple of months.
Yeah. So and it, it nice to hear that things are hopefully coming back online on the federal level. But still, as we noted about usage at the food bank, there's clearly tight dollars in our community and seems like a nice thing to do, especially with holiday spending potentially coming up for meals and gifts and whatnot. Any other discussion, councilmember Dan?
I just was going to ask a question. How are we doing on the, the water meters? The, the new, the new ones, are they completed now?
Oh, no, we still have a handful. Lance has that number. I think there's eighty that haven't been input yet.
Less than ten.
Oh, less than ten.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So close. Councilmember Cassidy.
Have, have we waived these fees like this for, in the past for any other circumstances?
We looked at a former resolution and we had done it one other time. I can't remember which. What was going on with that? I can't remember what was. I think we did it one, we had done it one other time where we didn't charge a late fee. And we didn't make anybody come in and prove that we didn't because a lot of elderly people, even with discounted water and that can, that are able to qualify for it. They're too proud to come in and ask for reduced water. So this would make it so that we weren't picking and choosing who would, who we were going to give, not charge a late fee for or not turn off. We'd just allow everyone to have it.
Is this, was that perhaps me COVID?
Pardon me?
Was that COVID related maybe?
Uh, yeah, it might have been COVID, but I don't remember. I, to be honest with you, I can't remember. It was, um, it was what?
It was the last federal shutdown.
Yeah, we have done it one other time before.
Are those late fees written into ordinance?
Uh, no, I don't believe they're written into ordinance or in our fee schedule.
Okay, would they be, would they be written into an ordinance? Does anybody know?
I don't think we would write that into ordinance.
Not likely, generally just in the fee schedule. Is it, we, we adjust the water, water and sewer rates in the fee schedule. So that's where late fees would also be.
Does that document explicitly say that we are authorized to do this change as, whenever we want?
Well, because it's an enterprise fund, it gives us, we're, we're a little more leeway than we did with what we can do with the general fund dollars. Because this is the enterprise fund and this is a business essentially. It gives us more options for how we can bill and discounts that we can give to people.
Okay, and then kind of the last question is, how do, how do things of this nature get elevated to this, to this council?
The reason why we're doing it is because the auditor will test water billing and they go through and they'll pull on a hundred, a hundred people's bills. Then they go through and they look at what our rules are, what our exceptions are to make sure that we're billing them correctly and everything's following what the council has in mind, even for like what we can write off. So a resolution for that three-month period, if they pull any of those bills, it would look like Shari just gave everybody a benefit. So a resolution is the backing for it to say that I didn't go rogue and just give everybody no interest that it was actually a council decision.
Thank you.
All right.
There, I have one too.
Councilmember Stubble.
Thanks. Judge Laura, can you tell us the number of customers who have been late in the last, let's say, October compared to our average numbers? Like how many?
Normally, the last three months have been about two hundred and thirty people. So it's about eighteen hundred dollars a month that we're assessing in late fees.
So two hundred and thirty people in the last month or so of the shutdown is what you're correlating it to? What's our average number of customers who are late?
Our average water.
The, the average number of late fees or, or customers that are not paying in?
Oh, probably five bucks. Yeah, it depends on the bill. So now water usage is less, so we're not going to, the late fee is not going to be as much as it would have been in the July billing when people were using more water.
Yeah, nothing less, Mayor, if I may, it's not the amount of money, but the number of customers affected. Like I'm trying to think, what's the spike here? Are we saying we're up to two hundred and thirty? Usually we'd have ten or?
But like, I, I know this probably not off the top of your head, but I think you want to know what was in October of twenty twenty-four relative to October of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, that's well stated, thank you, Mayor.
Three hundred and two people were assessed a late fee in October of oh four. October of twenty-five, uh, late fee penalty was two hundred and twenty-nine.
So what was the twenty-four number?
Three hundred and two.
So it was, it was more a year ago?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yep.
Interesting.
That seems confusing to me, Mayor.
Totally.
It doesn't seem tied to the shutdown then necessarily. Did the auditor raise a question for you then about?
No, what, what they raised question on is if, when they calculate the bills based on what we charge, were the bills calculated correctly? Were they late? Did we allow them a payment plan? Were they over two hundred dollars? Did they get sent on late notice? That's the things that they check for. Did, if we adjusted something off, what's our procedure for adjustments? And is that written? Is that a written policy? Which we'll need to bring to a present number because we're working off one that's from two thousand and ten where we can adjust the, just the max of two hundred dollars off somebody's bill. Only if they had a water break and they can show that they got it fixed. We'll need to come up with, we'll need to redo that one because it's very old and that was auditor's suggestion because that policy was so old.
And Mayor, if I just one last one. So the monetary impact of this decision for us tonight is we would pursue eighteen hundred dollars in late fees?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, call, call for the questions, starting with councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 And that passes. Thanks, y'all. I think there will be folks appreciating that. Next is approve S twenty-five point zero nine Capitol Hill addition block one twenty-nine lots eleven through twelve. Motion in a second, please, and then we'll get some details. So moved. They moved by councilmember Cox and seconded by councilmember Stubble. Regine, can you fill us in on this, please?
Thank you. The planning commission has recommended this for approval. It's a minor subdivision, so it was taking two lots owned by someone and they built two houses on it. Now they're trying to make the lot lines change to match the housing that was built on it so that they could sell those separately in the future.
So the two huts, two houses were already existing.
They are.
Was this one of these, like the property line went through the middle of the, the living room?
Well, no, it didn't go through the middle. The lots were oriented north, south, but they built the houses east, west. And so they're, they're trying to make a ninety-degree turn in that lot line so they could sell the lots separately.
So, I mean, currently the lot line does go through a building presumably.
Oops, through two buildings.
Yeah. Awkward. So, any questions?
I do have some question, I do have a question just by. So I see in this drawing here, Custer Street. So this is like a front and back lot line. According to my drawing.
So this is on the corner of Custer and Second. Right, the lots, the front of the lots as platted originally would both be addressed off of Custer.
Okay, so they're.
The way the structures that are built are currently addressed off of South Second.
So interesting. So then they're going to go Custer and South Second.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Northern House would be a South Second address.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cassidy, did you have a question?
Kind of similar, what brought it to here today? You know?
I'm not exactly sure what your question is.
When I was looking at them as well, they, there's like, uh, I mean, services for independent living is outsmarted on the, on the map. So I'm assuming those buildings have been there for quite a long time.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, I'm with you now.
You know what I mean?
So, um, we allow people, if you own more than one lot, to build over a lot line. That's not against the rules if you build over that lot line. But in the future, if you want to go sell that, you've got to reconfigure it so that it meets our codes. So where the previous owner owned those two lot lines built on those two lots, it was never questioned whether he's building over a lot line. Because it was assumed it was never going to be subdivided. So then when they decide that or future owners decide that, they have to come through and make it meet our codes. Does that make sense?
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Councilmember Hunt.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And that motion passes. Next up, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Lander Municipal Airport Hangar lease agreement between the City of Lander and Randall E. Frost for space number four hundred and one.
Moved to approve.
Second. Moved by councilmember Cox with a second by councilmember Cassidy. I think this is a pretty straightforward. We see these frequently. Any questions, though?
I just had one question. Is, is fifteen year now our standard? I thought it was five years, but fifteen sounds like a long time, but if that's the standard.
Mayor, I can answer that.
Please.
And this is a template used from FAA from the early two thousands when we redid the original contracts. The first term is fifteen years and then it's automatically renewable for five years after that unless one of the parties wants to renew a different lease. So fifteen years on the first time around. This is a new hangar owner, so it's fifteen years is appropriate.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. Any other questions? Call for the question, councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 And that passes. And since we follow Rogers' Rules of Order.
Mayor. Move, we adjourn.
Moved by councilmember Stubble. We get a second.
Second.
Coming in hot. So call for the question, councilmember Hunt.
Yes.
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 And adjourned. Thank you all. Question? They're like ridiculously low.